One line, yeah? One line. Please, everyone, I move for good indication, Councilman Burge will leave us in a pledge of leaders. Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us and for loving us. We ask for forgiveness for our sins. Please be with us and our citizens as we discuss the needs and wants of the city and the work to meet them within our means. This is my prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors in session. Welcome, everybody, to get back online again. I know everybody's missed that, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. Okay, first thing we have is public comments. There's nobody requesting public comments, so we'll pass on to the next with adoption of the minutes. We have one seven minutes to adopt. November seventh, twenty twenty-three, entertain the motion to adopt the minutes as written, unless somebody has any changes in mind.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. You can answer those who are here. There's the old business. New business, we have him, excited to listen to this. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit presentation by Malden Jenkins, CPAs and advisors. David Irwin, I believe, sir, you're going to give us the good news.
Yes, sir.
Good. I hear that's filed in your voice.
That's right. That's right. Well, good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Irwin. I'm with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner whoever saw this year's audit of the city's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here to discuss to you all the results of this year's audit. I won't take up too much of your time, but again, the purpose of my presentation is to provide you an overview of our independent audit report, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the compliance report that we issued in conjunction with the audit, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all, and obviously to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves that have been presented to you all are the responsibility of city's management and members of the council. As your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance we can provide as your external auditor. What this means is, in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As part of the audit, as I mentioned, there's also a compliance report that we issue called the Yellow Book Report, and again, this is a report on the city's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm pleased to say that we have no audit findings reported to you all this year, meaning we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the city's internal controls during our audit. And, you know, as I mentioned to you all last year, with all the new accounting standards that are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, if you look at this document, there's a lot of information in this report. It makes it all the more impressive to be able to present to you all here tonight an audit that had a clean opinion and no audit findings. So again, that's certainly something you all should be proud of, and to me, again, it's just a testament to the hard work done by your staff. Carol and her team, they did a great job again this year. They're always very accommodating to our audit team and work hard to answer all our questions and give us everything that we need in order to get the audit finalized in a timely manner. So, you know, we certainly enjoy working with them, can't thank them enough for all their hard work this year, and it was greatly appreciated. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. As you look through this, as you look at your financial report, one section I always like to point out is the management's discussion analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. This begins on page five of your financial statements. It's right after our audit opinion, and I always strongly encourage everyone to read this section. The purpose of the MDNA is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements, and it does this by providing a narrative explanation of your financial statements from management's perspective. So, you know, if you ever have a question about any fluctuations in financial activity or really anything unique or unusual occurred during the year, oftentimes you can find your answer within the MDNA. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section, meaning there's financial activity for not only fiscal years twenty-three, but also the prior year, FY twenty-two, in here as well. To me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It's a lot easier to understand the current year of activity when you have the prior year activity there for comparative purposes. So, you know, I could certainly understand if you don't want to read this entire document cover to cover, but if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read the MDNA. After the MDNA, all of the city's basic financial statements are broken into three components, the first of which is the government-wide statements. So again, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. All the funds of the city are combined that are under either a governmental activities or a business-type activities column, depending on the nature of the fund. Unless anybody has, for the sake of time, unless anybody has any specific questions, I really won't go into detail too much in this section. This is really the only time you'll see the city's financial activities reported this manner. In the day-to-day operations of the city, the focus is more so on the individual funds themselves, which brings me to the second component of your financial statements, which again are your fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. The fund-level statements, they focus on individual parts of the government and report the city's operations in more detail than that of the government-wide statements. And when you look at, when you think about all the funds of the city, you know, if I'm in your shoes, the primary interest to me is the general fund. You know, again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city and accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. Just to give you a brief summary of the financial activity for the general fund for this year, total revenues were around four point seven million dollars. That's right in line with prior year. It's only about a seventy-three thousand dollar difference. It was a seventy-three thousand dollar increase from prior year. You know, when you look at your revenues, the three significant sources of revenues for you all are property taxes, other taxes, and then fines and forfeitures. Property tax around two point six million dollars, while other taxes, again, when I talk about other taxes, that includes your insurance premium tax, your alcohol tax, your franchise taxes. They totaled around one point three million, and your fines and forfeitures were right at four hundred eighty thousand dollars for the year. And looking at expenditures for the general fund, they were just under five million dollars, which is a decrease of around a hundred eighty thousand dollars for FY twenty-two. So again, your revenues increased by about seventy-three thousand, you had a decrease in your expenditures of a hundred eighty thousand. You know, again, really no surprise, the majority of your expenditures was for public safety, that was around three point three million. You also had, you also, you also had general government expenditures of around eight hundred sixty-nine thousand and public works expenditures of right at two hundred sixty-four thousand for the year. After factoring in other financing sources, such as transfers from other funds and insurance proceeds, the general fund's fund balance increased by approximately two hundred seventeen thousand dollars for an ending balance of two point four million. And when I talk about fund balance, you know, one thing I always like to remind people, you know, fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash expenditures you see fit. Fund balance is merely the difference between total assets and total liabilities, only a portion of which is cash. Additionally, one thing to keep in mind, the general fund encourages expenditures of approximately four hundred thirteen thousand dollars per month. So you all with an ending fund balance of two point four million, you all ended the year with a fund balance equal to approximately six months' worth of your operating expenditures. You know, and again, what that means is that as of June thirty, the city could have theoretically operated for six additional months without any further revenue sources. That's, that's a strong fund balance for a city the size of you all, but again, with you all having a June thirty year end, you need that fund balance as of year end to get you through the months of July through November when your revenues are typically down. So again, strong fund balance, but that fund balance is certainly necessary for that time of year. Aside from the general fund, you all have other numerous governmental funds, which include, again, your special revenue funds and your capital projects funds. For the sake of time, I won't, I won't go into those in detail, but again, they all are in good shape financially as well. A couple of other funds I want to briefly mention are the city's three enterprise funds, which again are your water sewer, your sanitation, and your stormwater funds. Now again, enterprise funds, they're used to account for operations in a manner similar to that of a private sector business, where the goal of these funds would be self-sufficient and to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. And all three of these funds generated positive operating cash flows this year, which again is what you want to see out of your enterprise funds. You had, I believe, I don't have the financial stats in front of me, just have some numbers. I believe you had a slight operating loss in your water sewer fund, but one thing to keep in mind, including in your operating expenses is depreciation expense, which is a non-cash item. So again, while you did have a slight operating loss in that fund, because depreciation expense is included in that classification, you all still generate a positive operating cash flows from that fund, which again is definitely what you want to see out of your enterprise funds. The rest of this document are your footnotes, which again is your third and final component of your financial statements. The footnotes, they disclose the city's accounting methods and just provide an expanded explanation of your operational and financial results. There really weren't any significant changes this year, so unless anybody has any questions, I won't go into those in detail. But one final item to disclose to you all or discuss to you all is just certain information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate. Again, we give all received a clean opinion, no audit findings, this information is essentially formality, but we received full cooperation from management and staff. There were no disagreements with management that would have affected the financial statements. There were no uncorrected misstatements, and again, we are independent of the city as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my presentation. Again, what I've tried to do is just hit the highlights, what I think is the most important to you all, but if there's anything in there that you all have a question about, please don't hesitate to ask, and I'll be happy to address it. But again, you know, you all are in good shape financially, and just want to thank your staff again for all their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Anybody having questions, comments, thoughts? I'm very pleased with that. I thank Carol and her people for being so forth and helping so well. We've been very proud of everything she's done since the day we've had you. She's been a blessing to our city.
She does a great job.
Yes, sir, she does. We thank you for your audit results, even if we've been not as good, we still thank you for your efforts.
Y'all are great.
Really thank you, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was certainly exciting to hear, wasn't it?
Yes.
It was important to hear.
It was important to hear. Very good. Important to hear. All right. Important information we have here is employee Christmas bonus and Christmas holiday schedule. I think everybody has seen, I believe you got any paychecks last week, describing all the employees out there, but it was well deserved. And, you know, the way we set the setting up is everybody gets two hundred dollars clear. The state pays the, I'm saying, the city pays the taxes and social security for them. So that's why you see here it says two hundred sixteen fifty-seven for the full-time employees and one hundred eight twenty-eight for the part-time employees. So that's well deserved, which we could have paid more. We appreciate what all our employees do during the year, everyone and management, technical management. Anybody else have any comments on that?
I didn't wear my sand hat.
What?
You gotta bring my sand hat.
Yeah, any veil.
So that's what I'm gonna do.
Item number four here, the resolution, GIFA, as the drinking water state revolving fund, forgivable loan. So it's a loan we're taking out for fifty-six thousand dollars for inventory to identify lead service lines. Councilman Burge, City Councilman Harrison, will you explain that, please?
Ms. Harrison, you can. Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your folder tonight, you are, you have the resolution for the GIFA loan slash grant. You also have a scope of work and the project budget, and I'll just read the scope of work. I think y'all are somewhat familiar with this. Mike's talked about the inventory of service lines to identify any lead service lines. The scope is the city of Centerville seeks to conduct an inventory to identify existing lead service lines in its drinking water system through investigation activities such as employee interviews, acquisition of tax records, or engineering site plans, predictive and statistical modeling, field investigations, and/or pot polling. If you recall, we had contracted with One Twenty Water to assist with this inventory of the service lines. GIFA had some funds set aside for municipalities, counties, I guess, to get this accomplished. Our share was fifty-six thousand dollars. We applied for that. It's considered a grant, but since technically GIFA cannot say they're giving away grant money, they provide it to us in a loan, and as long as we draw all of those funds, it will be forgivable. If for some reason we do not draw the funds, the fifty-six thousand dollars would be repayable at zero percent interest at two hundred and forty payments. I don't foresee us going twenty years on a fifty-six thousand dollar loan, and I really believe that that's going to be forgiven, and it'll come in the grant form. Tonight, we were just asking for approval for the mayor to execute the loan documents and also to sign the resolution for this GIFA loan as well.
Yeah, thank you very much, please.
I have a motion to that we allow, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and approve the resolution as written.
Second. Well, just taking a little discussion. Mike, how long is this one thing to get it done?
The inventory itself has to be completed by this time next year, by October next year, the inventory.
Okay.
And then after that, we have ten or several years to complete doing away with any of the lead service lines that we have. I've been here forty-two years, and I have yet, we have yet to find any lead services in our system, but it's not to say there ain't one somewhere, but we do have to look at, dig up and look at each and every one on our system and verify exactly what the material is.
I know we tested one very frequently.
We test, we do prior testing, lead testing every year.
Right. We've never identified any lead testing either.
We have, we do have a small lead contaminant level that we find, but it's not from the system. We test our source, which is zero, and the lead that we do find comes from the customers' faucets and stuff that they have inside their homes.
Right. Okay. Another question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That's it, all signed. Senator Ford, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Item number five is the approval to send requests for bids proposals for a new fire truck. Councilman O'Beah or Chief Jones, please.
Mayor, before we start, I wanted to talk just for a minute about the Christmas holiday schedule.
Okay. Yeah, that was on my, well, yes, only the agenda, I see it now, but, oh, okay. All I had, all we had was, I didn't have that on.
I think what it was, just recognized it.
Yeah. Here we go. It's gonna be the standard.
Okay, so Tuesday after Christmas, the city will be closed. So it was just, it was just a point, like you said, we just wanted to get it before we got away, and I appreciate it. And we're gonna turn it over to Chief Jones because we want a new fire truck. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Tonight, as you all are aware, the splotch passed last month, and in the splotch, the city, of course, receives funds, and the city had a priority list, and the top of that priority list is public safety, and also, what is in public safety is the fire department, and we're in need of a fire truck, and that was in the splotch request. Tonight, what we're asking for is they were seeking approval to send out bid packages to different companies so they can send back their bids and the specs on a new truck. The reason I'm coming to you tonight so soon after the splotch has passed is for several reasons. First reason is it's eighteen to twenty, eighteen to thirty-six months out to get a fire truck. So if we wait any longer, it's just gonna be two to three more years before we'll even have one in place. Not only that, but the cost of fire trucks continually to go up every day. So tonight, like I said, I'm requesting approval to send this bid package out to several different fire truck manufacturers, and then next month we'll receive those bid packages in and open them. I went over this bid package and the spec sheet with the city attorney tidings, and she's good with it.
Okay.
Okay, so Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Chief Jones or Fire Chief to send out requests for bids for proposals for a new fire truck.
Second. I have a motion of second. Anybody have any discussion on it? So Chief, I would ask you, how many vendors have you come across that manufacture fire trucks?
There's several. I'm sending at least a four. I'm gonna send at least a four. I may send a five. What I'll do is I'll email it morning to all, I've already spoken to four, and I have their email. That's what they prefer, is electronic copy, and I will send those in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
They all make a nineteen-one class A bumper?
Yes, sir, they do. They do. They all have to meet that requirement.
Okay, have a motion of second. All crew say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Chief, send it out.
Thank you.
All crews, get out. All right. Item number six here is the approval of the twenty twenty-four Hill Lake Street resurface list. Councilman Evans and Director of Operations Drumford.
Director, first. Thank you, sir. In your package, you should have a list of four streets that we proposed we resurfaced this year within our Hill Lake program. Those streets are Eagle Harbor Island, Nantucket Island, Newport Island, and Arbor Lane for approximately, estimated total of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, six hundred and seven, a hundred and eighty, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We'll have to match that. Our match is approximately seventy-six thousand dollars, which will be budgeted in the twenty-five year budget, if approved. We're gonna, I just, just to get this list approved, which is streets.
Do you have a motion? Second. Do I have a motion? Did you make a motion? I'm waiting for motion.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-four Hill Lake Street resurface list.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay. I looked at those streets, and they all beat.
Yes.
They're bad. Yeah, I really can't think of those streets in the city that isn't, what is it?
So I do have a question. Mike, can you tell us how the streets were selected? Because I just happened to notice that they're all in one particular development, and so we might have an issue with that. So I just.
No, so we have a street priority list that we go by each year. We mark them off, and we resurface them, but the worst, we grade them, and the worst streets are the, are the streets that we choose to do.
I just didn't want anybody who may look at this later to get, to get an idea that there's anything going on there, just because they, several of them happen to be.
Also, we go many years where there's no streets in Eagle Springs. We've gone many years where there are no streets.
I just wanted to put it out there for everybody.
Yes, understood.
This time, I'm not, I'm not. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is approved. Thank you, Mike. So the next one here, which is the approval of twenty twenty-four Hill Lake grant application on my signature. Councilman Evans and Director of Operations Drumford.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Director. We want to make sure we get this grant.
Yes, sir. In your package, Mr. Mayor, you should find a letter to the Department of Transportation and a grant application that we requested that we can, we file with your signature this year.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize you to sign and move forward with this grant application. Second. I have a motion. Further discussion? Okay, here it is. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You have us, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, comments from the council. Post one, please.
I don't have much, just I hope everybody can come out to the parade this week, and hopefully the weather holds out this time. It wasn't too bad this kind of Saturday, but we had no way to know, so we, you know, appreciate this already, and welcome back, Larry. We've been running through our line of streams, first time I have seen him since he's been back, so we're glad to have you back, and I didn't have any more.
Thank you. Go through it. So I'd like to echo Councilman Burge on both of those items, and want to again thank City Councilman Harrison and the team for all, for all the hard work that they did on making sure that the audit got through, and I'm really pleased with the, with the clean audit, so keep up the good work. That's work that happens all year long, not just one time.
That's correct.
And I appreciate the flexibility of the, of the city employees on the reschedule of the parade. I know that many of us plan things around that, and so now we have to go back to the drawing board, but appreciate that and all the efforts and hard work of all the employees. Okay, thank you. Post four, please.
Amazing job, Carol. I mean, I know that it's not, you know, it takes everyone to work together. It just goes to show really how important it is not only to our citizens, but also to ourselves as. to ourselves as employees and as community leaders to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we can prove that through these audits. And so, again, there's an exceptional report. It's always nice to hear those. It's not always expected, but it's certainly nice to hear those. And again, I know every department is involved in all that as well, a lot of employees as well, so thank you, everyone. Please go back and wish, if I'm seeing before Christmas, I want to make sure you wish your employees Merry Christmas for me and my family, and thank you all for the prayers.
Thank you. You know, like Councilman Bird said, unfortunately, we canceled the parade, had to cancel the parade for reasons. Once Water Office canceled there, most of the participants in our parade, we're not going, we're not going to be working in that parade since we didn't have one, so it was unfair to them to fix up all their floats and things to cover ours. So I still think we could have made it, but otherwise, what we do this weekend, that we, people who do floats, use them for both parades. I know a lot of people looking forward to ours in particular. Larry, it is good to have you back. We have a presentation to the world now, again. But I appreciate that everybody can do it, and I think I told all, everybody, at least the management staff here and some of the employees, how much I appreciate them for what they can do and being willing to change their schedule. I saw, I saw some impact of that, and I want to thank Sarah, thank you, Chief, for having me with it, and Councilman Bird, who's waiting over there to recognize our firefighters and their families in particular. You know, families put up with more than we do sometimes. We have to take care of the household, and we all here having fun, if you want to call it that, but it has just been important, how that works. If they don't have anything else, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Councilor.